This conference will now be recorded.
All right, well, thanks, everybody, for coming out to another budget work session. I guess it's technically budget, it's capital improvement planning or on this, yeah. Maybe switch to the slides, next slide in the budget calendar here. We were kinda, I think we were hoping maybe we could just do this one and then hold off until, until May. But I think that April 12th work session's probably not gonna cover everything, we're thinking. So we wanted to talk about a second meeting, maybe late April or probably the very latest first week of May, I think.
Oh, so April 12th, probably not?
April 12th, yes, for sure.
Okay.
But then a second meeting, at one point, we were plugging in April 26th, but I know that didn't work for a couple people. So is there a calendar date? If you're just pulling up your calendars. Oh, so we've got. Would May 3rd, Friday, May 3rd work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Friday, May 3rd, may or has that worked in your calendar?
I don't have anything.
Yeah, I'm supposed to have a surgery that day on my vocal cords.
Oh, really? Oh, wow.
But hopefully, I can do it. Were you thinking in the morning?
Um, yeah, into.
I could probably do it.
Do the meeting before your surgery.
If I can do the meeting before, yeah, if I can get an afternoon, I'll double check today.
Okay.
I don't know if they'll know that.
It's gonna be a fun day for you, Chad.
They said I have cysts on my vocal cords and that's why my voice is so messed up. You guys, I should send the bill to the state of Utah, so it's over the homeless problems. They said that I strained my vocal cords and damage them.
Sounds about right.
It's a worker's comp injury.
Exactly. That would be a new one, right?
About the 26th of April.
I think that one didn't work for.
Probably on the 3rd.
I would be on the 3rd, okay.
Um.
Is there anything late April besides the 26th?
It's 26.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be Friday.
Could be an evening as well.
I have a meeting for this down on the 26th.
I have, I'm like.
Yeah, we had that.
Sent out and invited.
I'm like, I'm like, I'm ready for it.
Someone had a call.
We.
I've got that.
Oh, that's right.
Where's the conflict on 26th?
Would you want to, we've got planning commission on the 25th, but it's not impossible to probably hold this meeting in here, you know, that evening.
Can you record two things at once?
And we can see how far we get on the 12th. I think we'll probably need a follow-up one. I think the 12th will be pretty heavy with the, with the changes we're seeing in the retirement system from the legislature and health insurance and some other things, so.
I do think that there could be an issue with trying to record two meetings at once. I don't know if that's for sure, but in case that is an issue, maybe we need to schedule a second one 24th, the evening of 24th, the 24th?
Are we talking?
A Wednesday?
Wednesday, yep.
Oh, April 24th.
The only problem we have is when we hold it in here, we broadcast it to that room.
Oh, yeah.
And so that would be the issue.
Okay.
So that's why she's saying, she's saying Wednesday.
On a Wednesday, we probably shouldn't have it. I'll double check calls.
I have an appointment until, well, yeah, four to six.
I have a boring meeting, but I can get someone else to cover it. So that was for everyone after six, I'll just change it.
Maybe just placeholder of the 24th, maybe 6:30 or hit to go too late, cause it could be a three-hour meeting or so, you're thinking.
Okay, I should have like started at eight and go all the way until midnight.
What about the next week on the 19th, is that?
I'm up anyways, so I already have here.
That's where they're in, you saw, uh, St. George. ULCT.
That's fine, yeah, just, I said, like, I've canceled the Wednesday of the 24th.
We should just have it in St. George. Budget targets.
Wednesday at 6:30.
For which day?
Uh, April 24th.
Okay.
Okay, is that our placeholder?
Administrative Professionals Day.
Is that, is that Administrative Professionals Day, the 24th?
You're gonna make Emory work extra on Administrative Professionals Day.
You'll pay me more.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Just make sure you send a reminder.
Okay, yeah, for sure. Yeah, we'll, we'll send one the week before, for sure. All right.
I think we should do it this year because.
Way more meetings than.
I was looking up at other cities, chances of making. We, we make about.
We were looking to.
Hopefully, to.
So we'll probably cover that as part of that 12th.
Depends on which city you're in, but yeah, some of them do make more.
Perfect, yeah.
Clayton makes it a lot more. Joey makes like 78,000, I think, or something with 4,000 a year.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, they're a lot bigger than we are.
They meet every week, don't they?
Homelessness issue.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so that's the calendar. And thank you to Dana Levi and Brian for all the work they did in getting this going, so.
Really excited about, oh, oh.
Electric.
Okay. Should I take it from here?
Yep.
Again, thank you for being here. This is part three or part four of the, the full part series. So keep that in mind that we're trying to incrementally look at the budget this year. And we had discussed, for this session, we wanted to talk about capital costs. We did it with the Power Department, and that's initially how we set this meeting. And then as we started reviewing the Power Department, we thought it would be a good time to talk about some other things as well. Talk about UAMPS. I know last year, we had a discussion about UAMPS costs, what we were facing there. And we said we would revisit that sooner rather than later, and years passed already. So I think it's, I think it's wise for us to review what we're, what we're dealing with here with UAMPS costs. And then just kind of briefly, a rate comparison, how our, our rate structure looks. And maybe some suggestions on how we might modify that. And then cash reserve policy, what, what we has, have set as staff, well, no, I guess the council has actually set a cash reserve policy back in, in 2014. When there was that discussion about transfer of power funds and different things, the council actually said, so this is what we ought to have in, in cash. So we're gonna review that and then project our cash reserves and then maybe a quick discussion on the Power Commission. We don't think we'll be too long today, we think. We just want to give you the best information today. We don't expect any kind of decisions today, just kind of let you know what, what the issues we're, we're facing. And I think that's our, our role is to, to express the needs, express the issues that we have. And try to forecast how we're going to meet those needs. And then together, we can formally plan on how to meet those needs. So you can see this before, it's our, our mission statement, you're gonna see it again. That we really want to focus on enhancing the quality of community life. I think you talk about Kaysville and the word that comes to mind is community for everybody. And, and that's, that's what we're all about. And we do that through delivery of services, and that's the business we're in. And then as we put the budget together and think about that mission statement, there are certain objectives. Operations, employees, capital investment and infrastructure. So again, today, we'll focus mainly on capital investment and some of the operations, the Power Department. And then on April 12th, I think our initial discussion on April 12th will be our employees, human resources and how we, how we meet those needs. So that's kind of our, our trajectory as we're planning this. So we're gonna jump right in and we're gonna let Levi and Brian kind of talk about the capital needs and kind of some changes we've made and kind of go from there.
Yeah, so this is projecting out our capital needs in the Power Department. And we'll revisit, revisit this later today and compare it with our cash reserves and projecting them together. But this gives you an idea. We, we had Brian take our, our capital, our projected capital needs from last year and update it this year. So you'll notice a couple things on this slide. That second column, the budget of 2024, that's the current budget we're in now that was approved last year. And you'll notice there's some strike-through lines there. And I'll have Brian kind of comment on this, but we had Brian just kind of revisit and rethink what's the most important thing? And what's projecting out the needs for the Power Department? And some of those strike-through items, Brian felt like were, maybe you can.
Yeah, so a lot of those strike-through items are things that we felt like with the, with the two substations being under capacity and needing to upsize those substations. We've just seen prices of everything just continue to go up. So even when we predicted the cost of those substations a year, year and a half ago, they've gone up significantly. So as we've addressed the, the priority of what, what we have to spend our money on, we started looking at what, what it, what really is a priority and what can we push. We've also had to manipulate our load so that we're feeding different ways throughout our system right now than we were feeding at this time when we budgeted for these repairs. The time that this study was done, the long-range study was done and, and that we looked into some of these things, which has reduced significantly some of the strain and some of those pinch points that we have in our system. Because it's being fed differently. Once those substations are up and running, the new substations are up and running, we will be redirecting back the, the old way. So we will still need to address those in the future, but they're not as big of a necessity or need immediately like they were. Because they're not seeing quite the same type of, of current and, and load on them. And so we've taken what we felt like we could move, you know, projected down to, to 26 and 27 budget fiscal year. And, and put most of our focus on just being able to get those two substations online. As you can see, there. It's just a lot. So when I, I still wanna start focusing this next year on our, on our underground system. And that's why I left money in the 25 year there and didn't push it quite as, as hard as, as far as these other things, these other items. But I just have a lot of concern that we're gonna start getting into some issues with some of this direct berry, that's primary direct berry that's starting to burn up, that's 60 years old.
Tell me what that means. That means underground lines?
Yeah, so when they first started putting underground in Kaysville, well, just about anywhere, they didn't put it in conduit, they buried it direct in the dirt. That wire had about a 50-year rating. It's been in the ground 50 to 60 years, and we're starting to see burnups starting to happen more frequently. Fortunately, we haven't had any burnups where we can't redirect the power so that we can go back later on on our own terms and our own time, dig it up, make repairs and then. But there are several sections in our city with that wire in it that if it burns up, they're out of power until we can, until we can thump and locate it, dig it up, make the repairs. And that's just a lot of time.
And burnout just means that they.
Yeah, there's a fault in the line that it.
So you have a break.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So it's all underground, usually about four feet down. So we have a machine that we go through and hook up to the wire and we can, it, it's actually pretty cool. If any of you, next time we, next time we, we look for a fall, I can let you know if you wanna come see how it works. But we hook a machine up, it's, it's a pretty big machine, probably about 450-pound machine. So it's, it's quite the ordeal to get it out there and do our thing. But, but it sends a, a pulse out on the line of, you know, 40, 50,000 volts. And it will actually shake the ground. Like if you're walking along the line, you're standing on top of it, you'll feel your feet shake. Cause it's, it's shooting that fault into the ground wherever it's broken. We also have headphones and, and a little sound deal that we put on the ground and it will tell us and we'll follow along so we can pinpoint where that is. Then we dig it up and make the repairs, so.
So where you're taking like one and a half.
Yeah, so it's a pretty large.
1.6 something million off of.
The current budget.
Of the current budget, like can you just take that and put it on in there? I mean, cause that kind of, we budgeted.
That'll be a budget amendment, you'll probably see because it's, it's budgeted. And, but we shifted it down and just talking to Brian, it felt like, he felt like it was probably better allocate that money somewhere.
And that's something you can like do with leftover, I mean, cause I guess when we budgeted last year's budget, you know, we made the truth in taxation. We did everything so that we could hit the budget, but how does?
Last year, if you remember, in the Power Department specifically, we had to plug 2.6 million in fund balance to, to cover all this.
To cover this stuff.
So by taking this, you know, 1.1 or one, you know, one plus million dollars out, it's essentially reducing.
Go back into fund balance?
It'll be part of, yeah.
I'd like to, this is an enterprise fund, power fund separate from the general fund.
Right.
So it doesn't affect the taxation.
Yeah, the general bill.
So it all, it all revolves around retained earnings or fund balance. So what you don't spend, obviously, will stay in the power fund. It'll go over to the next year to be made available.
Yeah, we were essentially planning on using.
And then this, this Derek truck, $450,000 Derek truck, it's ordered. But they told me, don't plant on it for three to five years. So we don't pay for that until they start putting steel together. So we bumped that down a couple of years. Hopefully by then, we'll, they'll be making it at least, so.
Which is, which is unlike the fire truck, which we had to pre-raid.
Right.
Right, yeah.
We still have.
So anyways.
A couple other things to point out. Obviously, the, the main two items are those two substations, Schick and Burton. And you can see the, the two lines there, and they're highlighted in blue because they're impact fee eligible. And then also, following up on our last discussion where we kind of talked about the op center and the, and maybe focusing more on just the power building. I, I put a line there, but this does not, these, these projections do not include anything for that. So just keep that in mind as well. Any questions on this slide? This is kind of projecting out the capital needs for the, for the Power Department.
Yes, one question. Brian, is striking out some of these, is that, is that taking a very conservative approach? Is that kind of, are you taking out some of your wish lists or?
I just don't. Yeah, no, no, I definitely am taking out some wish lists. But, but as we look at it, you know, some of it, some of it is a, is more of a wish list just in hopes that it'll prevent future problems. It's not necessarily, you know, a wish list like we, we, I want it, but we don't need it, I think. We, we definitely need it.
Out of all the, all the ones that you strike out, what would be the priority out of those? I'm just curious.
Probably the boring of the conduit for the 2400 system. Just mostly just to mitigate the, the issues and the frustrations of, but we are, we are just budgeting money in 25 to continue that. So, yeah, we just pushed that one little bit and increased.
I guess my only concern right off the bat, maybe it's, it's not a valid concern, but just pushing off any of these unforeseen problems that we don't expect in expenses. And then we, in addition to that, we've pushed some of this back and then we're gonna.
So I, I did put there, in, in our regular budget, not in our capital, but just in our regular budget, I did make sure that we had, that we have enough in our, what's it called, just the general maintenance, just our general maintenance fund to maintain our lines. I, I did put in there additional funds, what, which they've always been in there, every single year, those, those are in there for those types of things. Unforeseen problems, equipment failures, burn up wire, the splice kits, all that kind of stuff that we may not use. I, that is included and it has always been, was last year's as well. So we, we financially will be covered, even if some of these things that we're hoping to prevent do occur. They're in there.
Also, Brian, and correct me if I'm wrong, but several of those items were to upsize wire because there was a lot of load. But that didn't take into account these new substations, which will lessen the load and make it not as, not as much of a priority as it maybe was before. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's still some, it, it will, it'll enhance the need for some. But others, it's gonna decrease, just depending on where, how we redirect. I mean, we're talking about development on the west side of Angel Street. And, and if that goes through and they end up developing that, that's gonna pick up a lot of load. It's gonna come from Burton, which will then we need to reroute from Schick and take Burton more towards Maine. None of that really makes sense. It doesn't in my head.
Thank goodness.
But anyways, and so there's a lot of load shifting as things get built out and developed and, and certain businesses that go in. For example, the Holland Group is looking at building that. That's gonna be a huge load increase sitting there, they're off of Fourth West. So we'll have to navigate what that looks like and, and how to share that load between the two subs that are on both sides of it, so.
Hey, Brian, sorry, real quick. So you said that once we've finished kind of with the substations, that the load will go back where it was, but it'll still be less?
A lot of it will, I mean, it won't be, it won't be the exact same just because things have changed. Some of it, some of it will go back. For example, we have Burton and Sunset, we have a little stretch there that, that's gonna become a, a higher priority. We've already, we've already started looking into options on how to mitigate that. Right now, it's not an issue. But once we have the substations completely done, it potentially, depending on how we rewrite power, may become a bigger issue.
So then will these expenses come back like as soon as those are back on board or?
Not necessarily. We'll still be all right for a while, yeah. And then also electric vehicles, charging stations, extra loads like that that we can't foresee. We don't know where they're gonna come up, where those extra loads are gonna come up. That's something that Greg Remington, our substation tech, is constantly monitoring. Those loads as they shift and change and, you know, the only thing that we can determine is, is that our current loads are changing because of, you know, electric vehicle charging or battery or solar or different things that, that affect it, so.
And again, we'll re, we'll revisit the same slide later and compare it to kind of cash reserves.
So, so just one question, why, why do you not have any projections in that for the power? Why do you not keep that in there?
And put some money there.
So we have gone down the road far enough to know what that might cost. And we hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll, we'll have one that we can at least start talking about. And I think after we conclude today, you may wanna say, timing, may, may adjust the timing on that.
We need some sort of design, mock-up design to start really understanding?
No, the initial thought was to public works and power together, but I think as we, that's evolved, we think maybe it's, it's better to keep the op center, public works in the op center and just do a power building. And I, I think it also increases some flexibility on financing by doing it.
I can't remember if we talked about this, but with the current building, is there any option to do shared walls at all? Like a shared, at least one shared wall, power building to save on cost or maybe that one?
If we were to add on to that building or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure they're. Maybe just a couple comments right here. Again, these are capitalized items, so they're items as if they're brand new. I think we need to emphasize what Brian was saying too, though. In addition to this, we also have maintenance money that is in our operating budget, that just ongoing operations and keeping the system. I mean, if we go, correct me, Brian, if we go replace a transformer or something like that, that doesn't come out of here, not coming out of your operating budget.
Yeah.
So there, there are two different avenues there. I don't know if that makes sense or not. And then the other comment is on, on impact fees. We currently have, and we can look at this, reserved about three-quarters of that cost already in the bank for, for impact fees. If you remember, impact fees are collected at the time a building permit is issued. And that money is set aside for capacity improvements, for those costs to increase the capacity that new building, that new permit has, has required. So that make, makes sense.
I just, I mean, I just know that, I, I don't know when we'll build a new building. I'm just surprised we don't have a number in there because we know we need that facility. I'm surprised we just haven't put that number in, we've been in the capital.
Yeah.
Capital, so that we're putting a million, two million a year into it, so that we have a reserve build up by the time maybe we get to 2027, there's four or five million there already.
I think as we go along today, we'll, we'll see how that comes into play.
Okay.
Okay, the, the single most contributing factor to our costs are what we pay for, for power. So we're, as you know, we're a part of UAMPS. We don't have any generation facility on site. So everything we buy is through, through UAMPS, either through long-term contracts that we have or through on-spot purchases. And as we, as we discussed last year, there were some, some issues that we were facing with, facing. And you can see here, this is FY '22, by month, what we paid for, '23, '24. And we've had this discussion already, but, you know, we, we had several months that we just got clobbered with, with resource costs. And some of those reasons, Brian can explain, we had some, we had NIBO down for a period of time and some other things. But it, it has softened a little bit, thank goodness. So this is actual to this point, this number here, current month, we're projecting the same as last year. We don't know what that looks like. And then these numbers in the darker color are estimates from UAMPS. So they, they look at our, our load each month and historically what that load has looked like. And they in turn look at the resources we have and then project what their estimate of those costs are going to be. Is that, is that accurate, Brian?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. And, and we don't pull from every single resource every single month. You know, in, in our off-peak months or our, our shoulder months is what they call it. And, you know, late winter, early spring, late fall, early winter are our shoulder months. You know, the majority, pretty much all of our load comes from one resource. We're not really pulling from any of other resources, but then in Ju, in June, July, August, into September a little bit, we're pulling from all of our resources. So they take that into account, what resources we're pulling from, what percentage of each one we have versus the months and everything and what's going on with them. And then that's how they, the history, our usage, our prediction. And then they come up with a projection of what, what they feel like we will spend for the, the next budget year.
So as you can see, in fiscal year '24, the year we're currently under, we're gonna be pretty close in terms of the, the budget for the UAMPS cost. And when I say pretty close, pretty close is relative when you're talking the power fund or when you're talking general fund. Cause I mean, there's still $400,000 off, but. But I think, you know, it's, it's not back to '22 levels, certainly. but but I think, uh, you know, it's it's not back to twenty-two levels, certainly. And it's almost back to to twenty-three levels, so. Um, that's kind of what we're seeing out there. And again, our our job is to kind of forecast what what things look like and so we're definitely going to see some added costs from from UAMPS.
I have two questions. So how how spot on are the are these project projections usually from UAMPS? Are they usually pretty?
They're pretty close. Um, we budgeted, you know, for example, here, we budgeted this number here off of their projection last year. Uh, Dean Dean's wise enough and smart enough to know that we should probably pad that a little bit just for insurance purposes, which you can see um, was a good thing that he did that.
We did pad it a little bit from what they estimated.
Yeah, they estimated, I think they estimated twelve-five, I believe is about what it was, was their estimation. And and so we're about a million off, as you can see there, Dean Dean padded it a little bit, just so to make sure that we would uh, be covered. Um, maybe it was twelve-six. I can't remember what it was. Um, and so they're they're generally fairly, not not horrifically off. I know the year before, this year, they were way off, but that was because of the uh, this year. Because of the projected, but but you go back in time and they were pretty damn close in twenty-two.
Looking at their numbers, their projections are about twenty, twenty-five percent higher than what was last year historically on the last which would take us down to about the twelve thousand nine, twelve million nine hundred right there. It'd be really close.
Yeah.
So last year with NIBO being there, are we expecting any disruptions like that? Either currently, are there?
Well, no, we're not expecting, you never expect anything to hopefully happen, but what what we're seeing though is uh, it's becoming extremely hard to get coal for the ones that are that are still running coal. Um, the hunters running at at partial capacity because they can't get coal to run to full capacity. And the coal they are getting, they're paying at a higher price. Uh, we also paid Hunter off this last year, but unfortunately, they've had several things break down and and maintenance costs and things that are causing issues that now are causing a drive for, you know, millions of dollars of repairs that have to be addressed. You have fluctuating gas prices. They did lock, you guys signed that, signed the one for a couple of the resources that were locked in and will be able to have a more plateaued uh, function or operating system, but uh, it's just, a lot of it's just they take the different resources and the different costs to run them right now, or just it's an aware dynamic.
Where is Hunter?
It's down in Mary County, Castleup.
Okay, that's on the bill.
No, that's ICA.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that um, UAMPS is different for every entity. It's not like, you know, Bountiful the same, the same thing, because every entity has a different resource mix. For example, um, Logan has some hydro out of the Logan River. Bountiful has some some hydro out of East Canyon, and they also have some generation facilities. So you you just can't say, well, UAMPS for for everybody. It depends on what your mix looks like and and we're probably, um, let's see if I said that right, probably the least flexible because we don't have some of those like hydro facilities or those generating generating facilities. Um, so, um, I don't know.
Huge generating.
Got a huge generating.
Good question on that, because we've talked about it before, a generation facility. Could you talk about that again, like a likelihood, how much? I don't know if that's part of your presentation.
No, it's not, but I I definitely can can enlighten a little bit on that. So we've actually been entertaining, or I've been entertaining the research on two different avenues. The first would be no generation, but battery, uh, substation battery, five to six megawatt batteries in our substations where we would, we would charge those off-peak hours and then use those batteries during peak hours to to distribute onto our lines to keep the peak plateaued. The other one would be gas generation. The batteries right now, I'm talking to Wheeler and Cat. And uh, I can't remember the name of the other one. Beesum. Anyways, uh, batteries are 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 just super expensive and they don't really know. I mean, they they give you a twenty-year expectancy, which twenty years i- i- to me just isn't good enough. I'm not gonna put a battery in one of our substations if they can just tell me that it says twenty-year expectancy. That's very ridiculous, I feel like. Um, the gas generation right now, I just barely met with Wheeler a couple of days ago. And they they actually, they did a, they pulled all of our records for four years, all of our load, how we distributed it, from what. Um, it it they did a really deep dive i- into our system, basically. And uh, they came back and said, actually, they were quite impressed with our resources in comparison to other UAMPS members that they've been doing these these on. Um, the worry that they have and that we have and that UAMPS have is that NIBO, we are extremely dependent on NIBO. So if something happens in NIBO, we're in a really rough way because we we draw such a high percentage of our power from them. Um, so diversity would be a big, a big uh, contribution if we could diversify some of our, some of our stuff. Which generation would do that?
Where where's NIBO? What is NIBO?
I'm not sure what.
I know where Hunter is, I know what Delph is.
You drive by Payson off to the right. Yeah.
All of those, solar.
Yeah.
Solar, the new solar that don't?
No.
Not solar.
Natural gas.
Oh, okay.
Yep, it's all gas.
The ones that.
Down by Payson.
You you're driven by the thousand times.
You probably just didn't know.
It's all natural gas? Is that what it is?
I believe so, yes. It's all natural gas.
Because there's no water running down.
No. So the their recommendation after their study came back that we would, that we would only utilize effectively um, for for our cost, five megawatts uh, generation. And they have two and a half megawatt generators that we do. Um, for them to, for them to install the whole entire, this is their study that we just barely went over with them. Um, and I haven't even talked to Dean and Levi or anything about this yet, so this is new for everyone, or Jason. So um, for us to generate the five megawatts and and make it utilized, so they took it, they took that for when it would be um, effective for us to use it. They they calculated that last year, it would have been effective for us to use our generation if we had five megawatts of power. Last year, it would have been effective if we would have ran it for twenty-two hundred hours throughout the year, was all.
Twenty-two hundred?
Twenty-two hundred hours. The year before that, it was thirty-seven hundred hours um, that they felt like it would have been, it would have been effective or efficient for us to use our own generation. And then, and the year before that, I can't remember what it was, but it was right around two thousand. Um, and what they do is they basically take the current resources, they take when our peaks are, when we have access to their lower costs, to their um, peak hours, when when prices are driven higher, when we're using from the pool project. Um, for those of you who don't know what the pool is, it's basically, it's just a, it's just the, a pool that you can draw from. It's not, it's like open market, basically, purchasing, so.
It's the stock exchange.
Exactly, yep. So anyways, we we don't wanna pull from there if we can help it. So we would use our own generation, plus when when costs go high, so when natural gas prices or coal prices or or uh, a uh, resource goes down for maintenance, we can draw more on our own generation. So based off of the last three years, uh, all the data that they gave us, um, for a foot for for the whole entire facility, all the control panels, the equipment, the building, the the cement, all the work, everything outside of the sub. So everything we would need inside our substation would, this does not include. It's only what they would provide. It's eleven million dollars.
It's a good question. I know that in the pool, like Matt and the guy before him, they would spend hours every day on their computers, purchasing power off the pool at when it was at its low, but we're not doing that anymore.
I'm not sure what Bruce is doing with that.
Those 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 days are gone.
They are.
With the Enron deal, where everyone was across the United States, you know, drawing from different sources and they don't allow a lot of that, but UAMPS is is scheduling everything through through their dispatch office.
Yeah.
So there's no purchasing power through the open market anymore, no?
Not not outside of when you need it.
Not outside of when the UAMPS is doing, we're grabbing it in-house.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I ask you two questions? So with the facility, where, how big of a facility could that be there in the op center and?
It has to be next to a substation.
Substation, okay. And then, other than diversifying, what benefits does that provide?
Well, it it provides us a lot lower uh, fixed rate. Um, uh, right now, natural gas prices are pretty low. Uh, the projections that they gave us were off of five dollars. Natural gas coming off of five, I believe it's down to like two right now, or.
Historically, that's the cost of natural gas, is a little over two dollars a day there. That's naturally the historic. It went to six.
Yep.
That's what killed this.
Yeah.
But historically.
And this this projection was based off of five. If we drop it to where it is now, we're paying about thirty-four uh, dollars a megawatt hour. Um, the projection they gave us at five, it was a fifty-seven megawatt uh, dollars per megawatt hour. Um, last year, when we were having all these really high unforeseen numbers, we were paying a hundred and ninety-eight to two hundred and fifteen dollars a megawatt hour. So you can see the difference there if we would have been able to generate some of our own. They did give us a payoff versus how much they feel like if we ju- utilize it the way that they they forecasted, they said that we would have a payoff of about seven and a half years for that eleven million. Um, I I wanted to sit down with you guys and just let you see those numbers. I I just barely last night at about eleven-thirty got the email with the information.
I'm glad you didn't send it to me last night.
So, yeah. Anyways, so um, I should have called you and been like, Dean, get up and look at this. Um, and so that's where the generation is sitting right now. Uh, we haven't gone far enough down this road to really determine, you know, other outside costs with uh, connecting into Questars. Uh, we also have to apply for an EPA permit. We've got to work with the, with Rocky Mountain Power, with the state, with bonding with UAMPS, with, you know, there's so many other things that are gonna, that are gonna factor into the the total cost. So when I say eleven million dollars, that is just the footprint of our generation. There's so much more outside of of that that's gonna be.
Would there be any economies of scale if you were to turn that into a pooled project? And pool with, well, Bountiful has their own generation, so maybe not, but.
There 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 are some uh, cities that are doing that, where UAMPS has a contract with them, where if they need additional resources or power, they can pay you and draw. Um, we currently don't have things set up to be able to to do that with with the way we feed onto the lines. We would have to pay and get, go through the process to get.
In the direction.
Mm-hmm. We, to be able to feed back on the Rocky Mountain Powers lines require uh, all of the paperwork and.
So you could not like contract with Lagoon or say Bountiful to say, we'll we'll pay you to run your generator and buy your power from you and bank it that way, or or like if Bountiful only runs it for, say, twelve hours out of a twenty-four hour day, you could pay him for an additional four hours to then take that power? Can you do that? I mean, is that not possible?
I think that's my question, whether we could do it and then contract to Lagoon or someone like that.
Yeah, so Lagoon's got a generator too. They're like, you know, they've got a huge.
On that level, as far as feeding back and distributing to somebody else for power, uh, my understanding right now, and I can double check and ask and talk to Jackie and and Mason, but my understanding is, is that the contracts and the and the things they all have set in place with UAMPS is that they oversee that. It's a, it's it it's a, now, first of all, we'd have to get the rights and pay for that option to even occur with with Rocky Mountain Powers Transmission. But then they oversee that. So if somebody needs more power, if somebody is is requesting that, then they can pay. We will, we will see money in the in the end game, but basically is the UAMPS manages it. And so they will come to us and say, hey, we need you, we need you to ramp up your generators because we need X amount of power.
To keep it somewhere else.
Kick it and put it somewhere else. So we will ramp them up, they will meter it, monitor it, what goes onto the, onto the system. And then it will then get distributed by UAMPS out to the other, to the other municipalities or resources or whatever they needed. And then we will get a kickback from that, which of course, they will take a kick too. So, so I don't know, uh, as small, as small as um, a generation as we will have, I don't know how logical that is. I'd have to talk to them and and get the data on that.
So basically, we're gonna need to increase the power rates to cover the cost rate.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's what we're getting to.
Okay, so I don't wanna get too far off in the weeds, so you give kind of brief answers, but I know when I was first elected, we looked into like that nuclear business that was going on in Idaho. Is that, would that even, I mean, you followed it obviously more than I have, is, would that even be beneficial?
It's it's not even an option anymore.
Not anymore? Okay, that was the question.
Yeah, they've completely, the project is over, it's.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Oh, I didn't know it died.
There is no new scale.
Oh, wow.
It's a good thing we didn't put any into it then.
Yeah.
Which is the reason that we were so reluctant to do it.
Right, yeah.
Yep, they couldn't, they couldn't get enough uh, support and and donations. They couldn't get anyone to to finance, they couldn't get anyone to back it, they couldn't get. Uh, there was also some, some stuff with the state that they were struggling to meet regulations and mandates and anyways, it ended up just going the wayside.
So one more question then. Um, I just went and looked at all the, all of our water lines and I'm thinking about how Bountiful has power generation off that dam. Is there anything we can do? Just like, and this is probably a really dumb question, but like on our like water lines, like they're running downhill. Can we generate power off of that or even just like cover its own like pumping that goes back to the?
That's a really, that's actually a really good question, because I looked into, I looked into possibly creating our own generation off of. And and Mike's the one that that got me looking into this. Um, and he questioned, I don't remember, it was a while ago, it was probably over a year ago. Mike, Mike asked about about how that, what that looks like. Um, and I I'd never thought of it before he brought it up. Uh, holy crap, I'll bet there is something. So I started looking into what that would look like and what that would take. And uh, after going into it, basically, we'd have to put um, generation turbines, water, uh, hydro turbines in our pipe where our valves are, where the treat leaves from the tank or pump house, and it'd all be gravity fed, it would generate. And after I looked at how much that is and how effective it is and getting the power to where we could distribute it and and then it just wasn't, it just wasn't reasonable, wasn't effective.
Hates Creek irrigation is is, it's got a project, just on top of Second North. I don't know how much that generates. Do you have any idea?
I I don't, um, but they do. Uh, we helped hook up, hook it up and I and I toured it and looked at it and and I believe it was Hates Creek that sparked your question maybe, that you asked me.
Well, they put that in when I still worked in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, just that they fill the reservoir and all that stuff and they wanted to see if they could get some, you know, they put a turbine on there.
Turn the lights on in their building.
It's kind of like having a windmill, just a small.
Yeah, yeah. So after looking into it, we just don't have enough constant flow. Um, plus, we don't have the infrastructure for it to be able to feed back to a substation where we'd be able to distribute it. Um, after I looked into all the costs and effectiveness of it, it just wasn't reasonable.
Darn it.
Yeah.
That would have been cool.
Right, not without a higher constant flow, a river or a something of that nature.
Okay, let's go to the next slide and it's the same information, just presented in a different way. So uh, we have identified what the cost is per kilowatt hour based on the previous slide on the UAMPS. So you can see that right here.
Yeah.
We are so, increase, increase about eighteen percent from twenty-two levels. So projecting about eight and a half cents per kilowatt hour for for next year. And then we're going to the next slide. And this is, this is oversimplified, but this is just our residential rate. So um, every customer pays a customer service charge of nine dollars and then the rates are based on the. So, um, every customer pays a customer service charge of nine dollars and then the rates are based on the first block. Thousand kilowatt hours, first thousand, uh, nine cents. So if you're paying eight and a half cents and you're selling it at nine, it doesn't give you an awful lot of margin to do anything but just buy power. And then every additional, um, kilowatt hour over a thousand is at that rate. And then the rates are, um, a little bit, a little bit different. So that's what.
Just to help me, so I can put this together in my head.
I, I like the thousand kilowatts is nine cents, a thousand kilowatts, nine dollars. Tell me what the average house uses per month kilowatt?
What's the average?
It's like nine hundred and fifty.
Uh, it's just on that, isn't it? Kilowatts per month?
The last report, we were, we were, yeah, the, the, Bruce put together was nine hundred eighty-three kilowatt average per month.
Yeah.
Nine hundred eighty-three kilowatt hours.
Yes.
Nine hundred eighty-three thousand watts per hour.
No, no.
Yeah.
So.
Nine hundred eighty-three.
So most of them, almost a thousand kilowatts.
Most of them would fall within that first tier.
Yeah. That's the average.
Okay, so, uh, this is just a, uh, you look at our, our tier. Um, first, so, now, but again, this is oversimplified too, because we've just taken, if a customer uses fifteen hundred kilowatt hours every month for twelve months, what would that look like? Everyone has a, a winter rate, summer rate, with the exception of Bountiful, they have a, a single rate. We're the only one that has, uh, the first tier up to a thousand kilowatt hours. Most tier it at four hundred. And then, uh, additional various rates. I think the exception to that is Murray. Their first tier goes to, to six hundred kilowatt hours. So, um, that's something we think we need to review, is how that tier structure works. Uh, so you see a comparison of where we currently are with the power rates. And again, there's that diversity issue. Every, every entity has diversified resource where their resources come from. So that's kind of a comparison.
Where, uh, we're, we're the net zero or where are we?
We're the first one.
Or the first one, okay. Sorry. Like, orange is, what else?
I'm calling lines, I don't even try.
I knew you were.
I don't even put forty, I heard. I just, I just hope that it lines up.
So we would be roughly, you're talking about a hundred and fifty dollars a month per house, per power.
A hundred and fifty dollars a month per house per hour?
Yeah. It was the fifteen hundred straight across every month.
Yeah, if you were paying, if I was paying on the twelve month thing like we do.
Yeah, somewhere in my rate.
Yeah. It'd be about a hundred and fifty bucks a month per house.
Okay, any, any questions on that? Okay, the next thing is we, uh, brought this up in the introduction, uh, our, our cash reserve policy. And again, that was adopted in two thousand fourteen. There are three components to our reserve policy. We think we ought to have, for the power fund, we ought to have a hundred and eighty days of prior year operating expenses. We think there ought to be a component that makes up capital reserve. So it's something, a substation were to go down, you'd have cash in the bank to, to, uh, meet that need. And then also a rate stabilization. And we just base that on ten percent of the prior year resource cost. Now, this number that we've put in here, we didn't look at twenty-three because twenty-three was, was anomalies. We went back into twenty-two and said, we're gonna use twenty-two as our, as our ten percent figure. Is that right?
Yeah, that, that first one, operating reserve, so looking at operating expenses for the prior year. We didn't use the prior year, we used twenty-twenty-two. And then also, we didn't factor in the depreciation, which again is an on-cash one. We just looked at the cash one.
Totally not to say that word.
Don't say that.
So that's seven and a half.
That's a bad word. Do not say depreciation.
So, so we think, um, according to the cash reserve policy, we ought to have about nine point seven million dollars cash at all times in the power fund. Now, there, there is one other issue that is coming to play since we set this policy. We also have a retention fund balance at, at UAMs that is money not in our bank, but it's the UAMs, that if we have something crazy happen, we can draw on that. So we think with that number, we could, we can get rid of this component. So we can put it down to, you know, say eight million dollars or so. Eight million is probably bottom line where we want it. Now, the way this works is, you know, we have that money at UAMs and it earns interest at the public creditors' investment fund rate. And the interest earnings isn't added back to this number. It's, it's decreased, it's a credit and decreases our monthly bill each month.
Live then, keep that.
No, it helps us.
Yeah.
Okay, so where are we? Wait, so you're saying we wanna have eight-ish?
Is that to go to the next slide?
Great transition.
Good transition. And then Lehi and Brian go back to that.
Well, that's not good. You guys are spending it.
This is taking that, uh.
Can we clarify one thing first though? This reserve though, that you're talking about right here, where it talks about the seven million or whatever, five hundred, that's operations. That's different from this capital, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that they're completely two different.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they are different. And that, so the second one is really kind of that, this million dollars.
Yeah.
That's more reserved.
That's for the reserve to cover the capital.
Correct.
Things that are in there, but the seven million is to actually cover the guys going out there and fixing the lines.
It's a hundred and eighty days of.
Hundred and eighty days of operations. So I just wanna make sure you understand that they're different.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So now it's, we're taking that same slide you saw before and then just adding on where our cash balance currently is and then projecting out and comparing them to see what, if we did these capital purchases that we're expecting, how would it affect our cash balance at the bottom? And so you can see right now, at the end of, as of with our audited numbers, June thirty, twenty twenty-three, our cash balance, that includes impact fee balance and unrestricted, is nine point eight million. And then how that would kind of look going forward if we did these projects. And making some assumptions for operations and, and kinda impact fees and, and interest and that sort of thing. But you can see we would, we quickly, um, get below where that reserve would, would be ideal.
But are you taking it to account the monies that we would be bringing in? Or are you just taking all the money out of that one?
Yeah, so that, that first line, operating activities, and we tried to, to factor in that last year was an anomaly. So you can see from operating, it was one point four million dollar loss in operating activities. And we tried to think, okay, if we, if we don't, if we take out the anomaly from last year and just, historically, the last five years, it was about two hundred thousand in operating that was generated. And then extension fees, you know, we made some assumptions there. That, that five hundred thousand is offset by the new lines. So those really just kinda net together. Whatever we charge in extension fees will end up, um, paying for in the new line construction.
What I don't see here though is a number like if, if we have enough in rate, if we make money selling power.
I don't see the operating activities.
I don't, I don't see the rollover for it, no. You're saying that you're, you're under operating activity, you're estimating that you're only gonna have two hundred and fifty thousand reserved from purchasing power only in, by the end of the year?
Like purchasing power and operating expenses.
Those net expenses and.
That's all operations, so, okay, so not just power, but, uh, the operations, personnel cost, maintenance cost, everything. We're, we, with what we're seeing happening in UAMs, we're thinking that we're probably only generating about two hundred and fifty dollars a year.
And the im, the impact fee, is the impact fee an account? Do we have, is it separate account? Like, monies from the impact fee, where does, where does it nest?
It's part of that nine eight.
It's in that nine eight?
It is tracked and as a restricted balance.
Right.
We, we had a separate, originally we thought it was too many numbers.
No, but that, but that's interesting to me because I think like one of the things you talked about, like the Holland project, I, I don't know how much. I don't expect you guys to know how much. But I'm guessing that the impact fee is gonna be fairly substantial to do a, a large hotel and, uh, and those, and the impact that it brings on. So like that helps pay.
Additionally, they'll pay extension fee too. They'll pay the, the cost to extend the services there.
Right.
So, you know, initially the cost shouldn't, shouldn't hit us too hard, I guess.
Well, and, and I guess the reason I bring that up is it looks like down here, we've got the impact fee, uh, goes from, you know, four ninety, we tracked in twenty twenty-three, but then we dropped it to three. And then we have it at two fifty going forward.
Again, those are just some assumptions.
And I know, I, I know, I know, it's hard. I know it's super, and well, it's, it's probably conservative, but also like, I mean, I'm just curious how much of an impact fee something like that will generate? Because if it's a million, I don't know, it's eight hundred grand or something like that.
Until we see the load requirements, we, we don't. But you're right, though, it does generate more than just an average home.
Yes. Why was this so high? I guess why aren't we, yes, is it because we think that the homes and, and let, that there's gonna be less impact fees moving forward?
We, we think we're shooting fewer buildings perhaps.
Okay.
I think that'll probably continue unless we, like you say, have a big.
Cause now we have it, we have it dropping in half, like half of the amount.
Of one year. We can look at the historical.
Oh, that'd be interesting to see, uh, how much it was.
I think our, I think our year to date from the current year was only like a hundred and fifty thousand.
So that's probably why you're doing that.
It slowed down.
That makes sense. Yeah, home, buildings slowing down. Okay.
So, um.
Wonderful. So do you think we could then, since we have two million left over in twenty twenty-seven, could we use that to buy a fire truck?
That's not.
Oh, that's not leftover? Oh, okay. We gotta get it back to eight, is what you're saying?
So, here are the considerations. Again, we don't expect any decisions today. We think, uh, in the next few months, part of the budget, we oughta, we oughta look at modifying the customer service charge for customer. Uh, we ought to look at the, the rate tier. Drop down to, you know, four hundred kilowatt hours in our first week. And what that would do is if we were to leave this number close to where it is, those, those customers that are smaller users would have the same impact of the larger users. Does that, does that make sense? So, I mean, the smaller homes, the fixed income people like that, if we, if we were able to, to leave this rate at four hundred and then bump up this rate, and we need to play the numbers and see how that comes out. That's one of the things we're thinking about. And then, um, probably some kind of overall rate increase. And, and again, this is oversimplified because it's just looking at residential. There are also commercial rates that we need to include in account. Um, just, if you remember, you know, a year ago, we increased rates by five percent. With the expectation we'd revisit within a year, so that's what we're doing. Our commission recommended a ten percent increase. And to go way back, the two thousand sixteen study recommended, uh, an overall thirty percent rate increase with four and a half percent each year to get to that point. I don't think we need to go that extreme, but.
How, how do you, um, identify the smaller homes, just by usage?
By usage.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyway, again, there's not a recommendation necessarily at this point, just, but there will be.
It is our current base service charge. It's nine dollars a month. And then we would, what's the recommendation to increase it to?
Customer service charge? Probably ten dollars or so. If you look at what others are doing, Bountiful's at fourteen twenty-one, Rocky Mountain's at ten, Brigham's at seven fifty, uh, Logan's low at five, and Murray's at eight.
We're at ten, we're fifteen.
We're not.
Murray's going up.
But you were recommending we go to twelve.
Well, we need to, I need to look at the numbers, but there would be a recommendation to probably increase that customer service charge. What, what that is, whether we sell them one kilowatt hour or not, there's still a cost to the system.
Right, to the processing of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, Murray, Murray's increasing theirs.
Yeah, they just increased it and then they're doing another one in August.
Yeah.
Bountiful did fifteen percent a year.
When I just talked to Lehi a couple of days ago, they said that they, they increased theirs last year and they are planning on increasing theirs the next two years.
The customer service?
Just the customer service cost.
How many, how many unit?
And I believe, he said their end goal is thirteen, I think is what Lehi said. We have about ten thousand meters out there.
So for every dollar increase, you're just, you're talking, I mean, ten thousand a month, like you said, a hundred and twenty grand a year. It's a pretty huge denting here.
Yeah, we have about ten thousand customers.
You've already given away about ten ice cream cones over the years for me.
So you keep saying, oh, it's just another ice cream cone. We've already given away about ten ice creams.
No, no.
Okay, we're making record time because that's all we have, with the exception of the next slide, which will be Jason and Brian.
Even wanted to talk with you about this for a while. It's, um, so when the city started, uh, putting together a power commission a few years ago, I, I think it might have been part of, um, when Shane came on board to, to put a power commission together. A lot of cities had power commissions at the time and.
Excuse me, Jason.
Sure. Was it Susan?
Yes, it was Susan.
Okay.
Susan had friends.
So, we have noticed that, uh, the power commission just doesn't have a lot of business frankly to, to talk about. It says right now in the code that they're supposed to meet monthly or quarterly. And it's just really, we struggle to have enough for them to talk about. Um, and you kinda feel like a lot of cities have disbanded their power commissions just because there's not a lot of stuff for them to do. And with a smaller city, we think maybe the, the council might have the bandwidth and the interest to just kinda handle power commission business on their own. So, in fact, a lot of cities have, with Paramount even recently, uh, disbanded their, their commission and.
There, there, there's, Paramount's actually, I found out the other day, that theirs is still.
Still functioning?
Function, well, they're still present. Uh, talking to, talking to the power department, they're very frustrated. They don't see what we do.
Well, wasn't the intention of power commission to be able to vet these things, get this presentation, make a recommendation to council, okay, we should increase by a dollar to ten dollars in the service fee based on, isn't that their role? But they're just not doing it.
Yeah, well, we just don't really have a lot. I mean, I could meet with power commission, uh, every time and just say, yeah, our guys are here working and, um, things are great. But here's my thing too, is, and maybe, maybe different councils will be different. But with the current council we have, I feel like you guys are very competent. And not only are you competent, but that you want to understand it yourselves. And so I take it to them and present things to them, and then I bring it to you. And you don't really care what they had to say. You wanna understand and know it for yourself, which is awesome and I love that. And then you base your own, you base your own, uh, you know, decisions off your own education and your own knowledge and your own. And I just feel like there's just so much redundancy and so much, it's just not effective i- i- in our size of city. I just don't feel that it's, it, it's a wise use of time and resources and everything else. That's just how I feel. That's what I've seen. Um, they did ask at a UAMs meeting several months ago, how many people have had, uh, power, a power board in the past? Every single hand in the room went up out of thirty-six, thirty-five people. Then they asked how many still had one. Um, almost all the hands of like three or four went down. And then they asked how many are looking at, if, keep your hand up if you are looking at keeping it, but take it down if you're looking at, it, it, they're not effective. And all the house hands, but two went down. Um, so it's, it's kind of across the board. But that's just where I'm coming from and how I. But that's just where I'm coming from and how I feel about it, especially where I feel like I have a council that I can present things to, and you guys can, and I can shoot things off you and talk to you, email you, whatever, and it's anyways, that's where I'm at.
I think at a minimum, we would recommend changing the code so that it's meet as needed or meet, you know, annually uh rather than requirement to meet quarterly, because sometimes it's just like, well, we gotta meet this, you know, check this box even though there's no business.
What would be the benefit of that versus just disbanding it?
Well, I mean, again, like Brian said, future councils might have different opinions that, hey, we want to have this board in place to give us recommendations, but I mean, I think we're leaning towards just, we feel like we could get away with not having one.
See, I would feel, uh, I mean, like you said, down the road, you may, and and you may be surprised that there might be some some citizen that is uh again, there's sometimes one that might ask for a lot of information that doesn't have, know anything, but there may be somebody that's really interested in it and actually is experienced and wants to be included. What if it's just like a, like you said, on a, by still keeping it, you don't have to restart it again, unless you think keeping it dormant does anything negative? It's drop the fill those seats, right? No, I don't think, I mean, I guess, I guess you would, but like even if it's just like an, an uh, every six month email or something.
I mean. I would like to see it stay in place, maybe one meeting a year, invite them to go to the UAM's annual meeting if they want to. And then just go through their, rather than dismantle.
That's how, yeah, I mean, that's my gotcha feeling right now.
Yeah, and I, I don't like that personally, but. I don't wanna, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna go, you know, I don't like to go ginge to tell me, but I just don't think there's any need for it. I think with our council as involved as our councils have been the last, since I've been here. And it's such an integral part of our budget, the more we know, the better decisions we make. And going out to a board that you know, I I feel like you, you get a board that comes and meets annually, how how involved are they? How, how, you know, you, they also just get agenda for one meeting, and they're like, uh, you know, they don't have any history, they don't know. Um, the power company has always been a huge part of Kaseville City and the council and the thing. I would love to see it come completely just back to the council because realistically, it's about twenty-five percent of our budget or total budget and.
You've got a wrong decision anyway.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with mine.
And it's just, we're just, we're just, all we're doing is making bigger government by having a.
When the decision's ultimately with us.
I think we should keep it. I like having, I think, I I like not having I don't like the consolidation of information and, I mean, obviously, information's good and all together, but I think if we get rid of the commission, then I mean, there's just fewer checks and balances in my eyes, but.
The reason that I would recommend keeping it just in place because of the group that initially put it in place. Um, if we ever get to a point where we put um power funds, enterprise funds being used for general fund back on the ballot or make an internal decision, I think we should keep our commission in play in order to give us sort of a protection-ish against.
Insulate the council. If if you've got a group that specializes in power and they can make a recommendation, it does insulate the council a little bit, saying that these experts have looked at it and have made this recommendation.
Yeah, I think that we could use them to our benefit if we keep it in play. I realize it's, and and if it's just as needed rather than annual, fine. There are a couple of people that are on it, yeah, they don't do anything. We can invite them to a UAM's meeting. It's just that if we want in the future to ever change how we do things, we, or we have a different council too. Um, it just allows us to not have to go through the process again. I think we already have a little bit of an issue with a handful of people and transparency and just, oh, now you got rid of this, and now you're getting rid of this. So it's just a fight that I think if we can minimize the expectation for power commission, it would be great. And then at the, in the future, a year from now, if we haven't done any, we could have the conversation again, but that's just my opinion. Obviously, you guys just.
Maybe rather than, oh, rather than you have to, like, cause I get it, then A, it sucks if you're having to show up, like, when were these, how often were you guys supposed to be meeting?
Quarterly. Well, well, we have meetings scheduled every month, uh, first Tuesday of every month, but we are required.
The first Tuesday every month, you're sometimes having to stay late or meet late in the evening, which I think is is a pain, especially if you're showing up and there's only two people there, and you guys are chatting about the same thing. So is, was that the initial concern and also the UAM situation? Like, does making it so that it's just as needed as this and you shoot out this and then you know.
There's a lot of factors that that play into into this, and some of those are exactly what you just said. But but some of it, or a good portion of it, as I mentioned before, you know, we get you know, I go to, I go to them and I get, I get this big long presentation and I I go pass through everything to them, and they, they come in and uh, they come with this, this recommendation that I feel like that I bring it to you guys and you guys you want to make your own decisions and you want to make your own uh, opinion on it. And it just feels like that was kind of thrown to the wayside. And then also, I've had I've also had a couple of the board members email me and say, well, obviously, you're, you're, the city doesn't care to to meet with us and because we keep counseling, because I don't have anything to talk to them about. And I'm sorry, but I don't really want to go on a Tuesday night and tell you um, hey, um, things are cool, I got guys rebuilding a line over here. And it be just informative, it's not anything. And maybe I need to be better at emailing them. They inform. You're telling us right now that you don't feel like it's a good use of your time, and I agree with you. And not only do I agree with you, but it sounds like about twenty-eight out of thirty other power departments feel the same. I'm gonna go off what the history of power co- independent power companies are saying, and then people are saying, they're saying it's not worth it to them. They would rather just deal with their council. There, there's gotta be a reason why the, if there's thirty hands in the room up and there's uh, two hands left when you're all done, there's gotta be a good reason.
Part of the reason for that, Mike, has gotta be like, I mean, you know, selfishly, if I was running, running like, if I was department head, I really wouldn't want to be, I'd want to be answering to less people. But unfortunately, like, we're our public.
I I get it, but it's more efficient.
Part of the.
I'm all about trying to be efficient.
Well, let's also make meetings at four o'clock in the afternoon. They don't have to be at night. I mean, that's a nice night for you to waste your time.
Well, we gotta, we would have to consider, you know, because they have jobs and they have.
Well, so and if they can't, if they can't serve it, then we find other people. I'm just saying, we can make it, we can make it. It's just, it's just, if you guys decide you want to disband.
This isn't, we have to make a decision right now.
No, no, this is just a discussion.
I want to give my input too. I've had several members in the community starting to get more and more upset the more we cancel these meetings.
Yeah, so.
Because they're appearing like these are slipping through the cracks. And I agree with you, and after returning on the commission, I think the council is absolutely capable to deal with you. I like the, I like us to be more nimble, smaller government, less re- um, um, yeah. Just more efficient, and I just really don't see, I mean.
And I feel like if there's a power issue or power, it it's on the agenda, the council, it goes out, people can see it, they're informed by it, and they can come and talk about it.
Yeah, and if we have more meetings like this throughout the year, I think that is completely.
I think it's public, public perception.
Yeah.
Um, we don't listen to the planning commission. Um, but I realize that's a state statute requirement, but we, literally, we do the same thing. They bring us something like, yeah. We don't really care, we just, so it's a.
And I'm not, I'm not discrediting the power board by any means. We've got some extremely intelligent people on our power board that are, that are super awesome when they show up.
Um, yeah.
That, I will say that that is extremely frustrating on my end. Back to the public is when I leave my kid's basketball game and I leave my family in the, in the evening, and I come here and I get two guys from the power board to show up.
Yeah.
Which technically, we shouldn't even be holding a meeting at that time. We should have canceled it, and we did it. And in hindsight now, knowing what I know, I would said, well, looks like we're done, see you later. And that's been more times than not. And the last few times we've met, there's been a lot more of them there because we had we have topics like a rate increase, which they're gonna take more interest in that, so.
But I'm actually fine with keeping the public perception that there's some negative aspects of that, because what we're really doing is making us all more efficient. And so in the planning commission, even though if we ultimately have the decision, it's helpful to look at all of those notes to kind of flush out a lot of the questions. But I haven't really found that with the power commission. Just, or I haven't found.
Yeah.
Any, any, any.
Well, that's.
Coming out of.
I mean, and I'll support and do whatever it is you guys would would like to do as a council, definitely one hundred percent. Um, I'll, I'll do whatever it is you decide. And and some of it is exactly what John said, you know, coming from, coming from being the one that's running the department, I prefer just to come to you. And and because I don't feel like in the times that I have brought any kind of recommendation to the council, I feel like the council asked all the exact same questions. They, nothing new was brought to you because I met with them.
Yeah, I do understand.
You already have the information, you already asked it. In fact, you asked more questions and inquired about more things than they did. So, and I don't know, that's just where it's at.
Yeah.
We could look at, if you'd like, kind of tweaking the code to say, we have a commission, but it doesn't have to be an active commission. You know, if we if we have a big project coming up, we we want to get a group together to sort of act as a ad hoc task force almost where they look to explore a project and really dive into it. We could, we could appoint that, but that would allow us to just sort of be flexible and you know, as a future council that wants to make it even more active, that just that way, we don't have to just change the code or.
Yeah, and I don't like saying, well, meet at least once a year, then you're that one time a year, no one's gonna show up.
No purpose in, unless there's a business.
I like this idea that, because I think that, like, I mean, I'm trying to think about other commissions also, like the Parks and Rec. And sometimes it's just nothing, right? But then sometimes they'll talk about like a park. And I think Josh actually gets ideas from the combination of think tank, like, and obviously, these people are there because they like it. So they're saying like, well, what if we did this? What if we did escape or, you know? So I think that, like, it's only in those situations where it become, like you said, when it was talking about rate increase, you had people come because they had their suggestions maybe, but I don't know. I don't know that there's that much in the power exciting things that they can offer. I mean, I guess what's his buckets on the bountiful? Which for bountiful, I would see that he could be an asset to have, but you probably could just call him.
Yeah, that's.
On the phone.
Is like, that's the thing, and I, and I love Alan Farnes, he's absolutely awesome. He's super smart, and if I ever did have a question, I'd just call him.
Yeah.
But that's also where, you know, when I come to you guys, I I come to you with, hey, I've talked to I've talked to these professionals that have been in this field, just like Alan has, at Murray, at Lehigh, at Spanish Fork, at Bountiful, at 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 Logan, um, you know, so.
It's just such a specialized thing. So, yeah, you, I can see where he's feeling like, hey, you know, there aren't a lot of citizens, like, there aren't a lot of, like, normal do, normal day
Yeah.
folks that understand what's going on, the intricacies of.
I can understand, it feels like a waste of time.
Yeah. To have a commission that never meet, then people, some of these same people will probably be equally as concerned. And so it's like.
Well, Mayor Tron, I think you mentioned once or something, I thought when we were chatting about having just like a community board and then possibly putting the power commission responsibilities onto that, is that still something we're looking at?
I would still like to do that, just sort of morph into economic development, um, preservation and and power commission. Just have a special project task force, basically. That would be an ad hoc group.
Because even the, even the parks and rec, like, the last.
Yeah, the last couple of meetings have been.
Oh, well, like, the last year, it's been like, we'll meet maybe, or, or, you know, sometime, and then you show up, and there's two people there, or three people there.
But I'd also love it to incorporate fortherto my sort of day activities at the park. So, yeah, I would love to be able to do that. If this could be morphed into that, great. It's just that I think that there's already a sentiment that Kaseville Council is trying to shut down transparency and communication, just for a handful of people, we know who they are. But, you know, give them less to talk about. But I also understand having a redundant committee is a waste of time for everybody, so. Definitely something to think about.
Sweet. Great, all right. I think that's might be our record.
We should add, we should add more things to the agenda. If I, if I could just really quick, just say thank you, because you guys really are an awesome council. And I talk to a lot of power departments all, all the time. And it's across the board. They always say the same thing that, that your job is always so much easier and better when you have a council. That's, that's good. And and I feel like we do. And I don't have a lot of history, I don't have a lot of experience, but but just listening and watching and observing other places. And I I feel like Kaseville's really a unique place as far as its administration, its its mayor, its council, you know, what what we do as a government body, it's pretty awesome. So thank you. I just wanted to just throw that out there, say thanks.
Thank you for what you do.
Just before we hit unrecord though, like, back to what Mike was talking about, I guess, what's your impression about a building? Because we didn't really, I mean, just while we have you as a, as a group, um, because obviously, what what Dean was alluding to is we are gonna have money to but we're obviously seeing, we don't have money to put off to the side for that building, but how important is?
Well, on an operation standpoint, uh, whether it be the power department that has a building or we, we, we did discover an alternative route, I I feel like it's a, it is a very of high significance and importance. We are bursting in the seams. We're struggling to to have operation, operating capacities and room. We've got thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars worth of equipment that's un- unsheltered, uncovered, it's just exposed every single day that should be, we we get so much more life out of it, so much more operations out of it, uh, effectiveness, everything else that if it was better, uh, you know, it, we, we're making the best out of what we have, of course, and we're gonna continue to do that. But I feel like, I feel like, uh, it's that time of day where the the sun and the lights.
Oh, I thought.
Coming in on this. But I do, I I feel like, um I, it, that's something I didn't ever think about until you guys talked about it, and then I heard back, it kind of fed back to me, and and I feel like that if that's something that we can make work, it would be a very, it would be a very good direction.
It realistically makes a ton of sense. I'm just surprised you didn't have it included in the budget as part of capital improvement, because you think about the windfall of the whole thing. You build a power building, it frees up a lot of space for public works.
Right.
And parks. They can figure out how to make that building that they have last longer. I mean, the building's forty years old, thirty, forty years old?
Thirty years old. And by, and and the one thing the power company does have is a revenue source. And if you start building up the reserves a little bit and put that in there, maybe in four or five years from now, it would certainly make a bond more available with a revenue source from the power company, and it could eliminate a lot of issues the city has.
No, I like the idea.
We think it's important. Yeah, we do, but we also recognize that with what we're seeing with resource costs, there's going to be a rate increase to cover those costs. With a bond for building, there would be an additional rate increase. Is the council willing to?
No.
To go that far?
Well, we are willing to put it on our plan so that we can.
Well, and and have, and have you start looking at, like, how much room would you really need if it was just you in a building? How, and how much could you get by with like that range? Uh, the the covering, I mean, I I don't think we need heart indoor garages, but if we have the canopy or what do they call them? Three-sided. Carports, yeah, I mean, you know what I mean? Like, how much is it gonna cost?
And on an operational standpoint, I feel like it's, it's a high priority and it's something that that we, the city needs. On a financial standpoint, I think that it's definitely something that we can. On a financial standpoint, I think that it's definitely something that we can, we can see how much we can prepare for and put it in the plan. But it's gonna be like Dean said, it's with, with the cost, power costs and resources going the direction they are, it's a, it's a historical phenomenon that none of us foresaw before now, you know what I mean? Where we'd ever thought in a million years we'd be dealing with the resource issues that we're dealing with right now, even five years ago. It wasn't, it wasn't possible to predict where we're at. And so I think only time will tell. And, and the revenues that we actually do have, um, I, I think it would be good to, to say, hey, you know what? This is a, this is a plan that would be good to look at what it looks like in three years and prepare, see how we might be able to prepare for that. We might in three years look at it and say, oh, I don't know, we're even close because of the things that transpired. Uh, you know, and I, and I agree with you. I don't feel like it's, I personally don't feel like we should just, oh, well, we, we want it, so give them another rate increase. I, I don't really feel like that's, that's an answer either. So, um, you know, right now, as it sits, on a, on a financial scale, seeing what we've seen, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it would, would realistically work, but on an operational side of it, looking at public works, us parks, it, it's a need. So, I don't know.
To that point, I kind of like the idea of using the existing building and building onto it and having one kitchen for all the departments over there. Just so you have that interaction with other staff and it's not so segregated. And if any way to bring down costs as well.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you. Thank you.